Call this meeting to order, Mr. Williams, would you please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please join me in prayer? Supreme Architect of the universe, we invoke thy blessing at this time. May this meeting thus be conducted in peace and closed in harmony. Amen?
Amen.
Now we got it wrong. I just covered well.
Mike. Well, good evening to all and welcome to the Allegheny County Commissioners' Public Business Meeting Agenda, Thursday, March 28, 2013. Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Three pages. No.
No.
Good.
All right. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 21, 2013, Public Business Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, to report to you my attire, I know this is not necessarily dry cleaning attire, but I do appreciate you guys and Commissioner, and boy, this looks nice. Wonder where it got pressed. But anyhow, that being the case, had an opportunity to be a guest referee today up at Mount Savage and the middle school there. The basketball girls and boys ended up playing the teachers and the cops in a basketball game. It was have to do with the Dare Program. The sheriff was there and during halftime talked about not doing drugs and not smoking and alcohol. It was a good program. The ambulants were sent home afterwards. I did not need oxygen after running up and down the court.
Twice.
He was more than twice. It was more than twice.
Three times.
That's a technical on Bill Valentine.
Oh, God.
You know what? I thought I would come here and referee these guys because they don't give you the respect you deserve there, Mr. Rudd.
Well, that's good.
So, you know, be careful on you. Might get you for charging, so.
He might get a free shot.
Yeah. And I am pretty proud that I was able to fit in a 2X. Just glad the stripes weren't going the other way. Anyhow, but a more serious, Commissioners. Anyhow, what a load to get a load of me. Received a fax from the office of the sheriff. Allegheny County committed to public safety. I wanted to read this into the record, gentlemen. I do believe the press did get this last night and a copy has been left on your desk, sir. Allegheny County Sheriff Office, Public Facilities and School Safety Plan Commitment. As citizens across the United States mourn the tragedy of the recent and senseless shootings at the public facilities, including schools, there is an understandable desire to take decisive action. For the past several months, law enforcement agencies from coast to coast, school boards and governments at every level are again reviewing the facts, discussing options, and trying to determine how to use the resources available to make public facilities even more safe. Allegheny County is not an exception. The sheriff's office is currently in the process of reviewing and updating our plans and procedures for crisis management and prevention. This will provide a framework in which every school in Allegheny County, both public and private, can plan for and perform their emergency functions during school crisis situations. It is further designed to assist the staff in following the procedure with the greatest possible speed and safety. Regardless of the prescribed procedures, training and instructions, we acknowledge that the sound judgment of the administration and staff is an integral part of safety management. As a result of these efforts over the past several years here in Allegheny County, the Board of Education, especially teachers and administrators, students and parents, law enforcement agencies and government in every level, the safety of our schools has been enhanced and constantly upgraded. We can all take pride in that fact. Our schools are safe, but will not allow ourselves to become complacent. Obviously, for security reasons, we do not discuss specific details of security matters that are in place in our public facilities, including schools. Safety and security in the public facilities is constantly evolving. We must utilize available resources in an efficient manner. As such, I have advised the county commissioners that I am forming a work group that will work closely with the sheriff's office and my staff as we continue the process of reviewing the safety measures that are currently in place. I have spoken with the superintendent of schools and asked him to allow the coordinator of safety, security and risk management for the county school system to be part of this work group. The main objective of this initiative is prevention and personal safety of each and every citizen using public facilities in Allegheny County. As I stated earlier, please understand, the schools in Allegheny County are a safe environment for our children. As a parent of two children in the public school system, I am always concerned with the safety of our children inside and outside school, and this will continue this effort. And of course, that is a commitment. Press release from Sheriff Craig Robertson, and the results of this committee will be forthcoming to you, Commissioners. All right. Ms. Bennett, number one today is the Telephone Book Recycling Campaign and compost site summer hours. Ms. Bennett, our recycling coordinator is here.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Just like to take a few minutes to announce that it's again, once again, it's time for the annual Telephone Book Recycling Campaign in the area's schools, public and private. This is actually our 21st year the campaign's been in operation. Last year, the schools, the students collected over 17,000 obsolete telephone books that diverted from the landfill with recycling efforts. The campaign is, the students are awarded a cash award for participation. All the schools collecting over 100 telephone books receive $5 for 100 books. And then the grand award is $200, and this collection results was based on ratio between the number of books collected and the students in the school. So, the campaign has already begun in the schools, and as I understand, the students have already brought in telephone books. It is running from March 18 through April 30. So, this telephone book collection is a very well received with the students. They really enjoy collecting and competing and they've, for 21 years now, this is the 21st year, so it's been wonderful. It also, these telephone books also add to the county's mandated telephone or recycling goal, which is 20% now. It's been increased from 15 to 20% by the Maryland Department of the Environment. So this adds to our recycling totals. So, anybody, and anytime, if you have a telephone book and you don't have students in school or know who to give it to, they can be recycled in with a newspaper at any time.
Okay.
So, but the schools really appreciate them, and then it helps, you know, they get money, you know, for it, so. And also, I would like to announce that the county's compost site will begin summer hours this coming Wednesday, April the 3rd, and the hours and days are Wednesday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And this is a very nice location. You can bring your brush, your limbs, doesn't cost anything. The material is ground up into mulch, and then you're also, you can take the mulch out for free. You do have to load it yourself. There's no, nobody there to load it for you, but, so if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me. I'm available by phone or internet, email. So, thank you very much for listening to the recycling news for this month.
Well, Tara, you'll make Madison, my number three child, very, very happy. She gets all excited about the phone book recycling thing. Matter of fact, she won a prize when she was at Westside last year, and so hopefully she'll make a splash at Cowherd Christian Academy this year, so.
Great.
So, she's looking forward to it.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, we are having a special hearing today for our Constant Yield Hearing. Mr. Bennett, would you please share some light on what requirements of the state are?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Let's see if I can get this fired up real quick. I may have just fired it down.
You're good. You're looking good.
Never mind, we canceled the hearing.
Yeah.
Well, maybe. Well, as I play with this thing, tonight's our advertised Constant Yield Hearing. What I was gonna flash up on the screen, if I can get it to work, is, is the notice that ran in the paper last week. It ran in the paper on Wednesday. We have to, by state law, anytime our tax rates exceed the constant yield rate, we have to run an ad in the paper and hold a hearing on it. This year, a little bit different for us, for the first time, at least in my memory, the county rate's actually under the constant yield rate, which I think is a, is a good thing for the taxpayers. We ran the ad because some of the municipal rates are still over the constant yield rate. It's largely to do with tax differential coming into play, but if I can get this up, I'll show you.
Well, why don't you repeat that? That this is the first time in a long time that the county?
And I don't have the exact year, but it's certainly the first time since I've been here that our rate is under the constant yield rate. You can see here, and I know it's a little bit small, there's a lot going on in this ad, but the county rate, which is the excluding towns rate up there, identified by constant yield is 9973. Our rate, based on your recommendation to lower rates another tenth of a penny, is 9800. So, we're well under. Some of the municipal rates, as you can see on there, if you can make it out, are just slightly over the constant yield amount, and, but at the end of the day, the grand total taxes that we're generating from our rates are actually $300,000 under constant yield. So, well under it. I think you guys making the move to continue to reduce rates is, is beginning to show. We did the ad just essentially because we need to, by state law, to make sure we can keep the rates in place for municipalities.
And with that ad, do we have any ability to change where it says proposed real property tax increase?
We do not. That was something I was gonna talk about. The, the language in state law is very specific as far as how you have to run the ad. We have to even be very cautious regarding the font of the ad in the paper. So, it, it reads at top, "Property Tax Increase." That's simply because some of the rates identified are higher than the constant yield rate.
Right.
You can see, if you look at the very bottom right, we're $305,000 under constant yield in grand total. So, tonight's hearing is simply one to talk about this a little bit, to allow any kind of public comment. Tonight would be the time for public comment, and then, you know, we'll move forward based on your recommendation of keeping the rates lower.
Jason, a very quick definition of constant yield, so everyone in the audience understands what it is.
Constant yield required by state law. Every year, the state of Maryland calculates what would be the constant yield, so you'd get the same amount of tax as the prior year, because we all know assessments move up and down every year. So, the state provides us tax rates that would get us the exact same dollar amount of tax as we got last year, so.
Kind of like our maintenance of effort.
It's kind of like our maintenance of effort, yeah. Yeah. So, typically, at least in, in my time here, we're usually the opposite of this, if you would. Our rate's usually higher than the constant yield, but the way property tax assessments have gone, we've, we've fallen under it. We're well under it now.
And how long have you been here?
This is my 10th budget, so.
10th budget.
10th time I've seen this and first time I've seen it go this way. We actually had to call the state of Maryland to see if we needed to run the ad. They said yes because of municipalities.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Is there any questions for, in the audience, for Jason? Yes, as, Mr. Davis?
Am I?
John, John, hold on just a second. As you come up, as you come up, need to make sure that everyone gives your name and your address for the record, and please, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much. I'm John Davis. I live in Cumberland. And I'm glad I heard this right. The constant yield rate is lower.
Yes.
That's very good.
Awesome.
That, that should solve some of your critics. I'm not one of them. So, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mr. Davis. Is there anybody else? Okay. Would you review again where we go from here?
Where we go from here is, this is technically the only hearing we have to have on this, but certainly, we've got a lot more to go with budget. First Budget Workshop with you Commissioners is gonna be April 11, and we'll talk about where we're at with the budget as a whole. At that time, you know, you can make any kind of adjustments you like. Typically, from this point, once we've had this hearing, if there's no great public outcry, if there's not something you want to change, these rates will, will continue with these rates.
And when we adopt the budget, that's when we're setting the rates?
Once we adopt the budget, which right now is planned for June 6, that would set these rates official.
That would set, okay.
So, there's plenty of time between now and then to, to make a change.
Okay. Well.
Jason, real quick, just an observation. So, the proposed rate, according to the resolution that was adopted a few years back, is essentially almost two full cents lower?
It is, yes. Yeah. The constant yield is 9973, our rate's 9800. So, yeah, we're, we're well under it this year. Just from what I see, I think it would take a lot of, a lot of movement and assessments to have us be over it next year. I think we're.
If you had a property value of, say, $150,000 home, what would that be in savings for you?
You're looking at about, do some quick math, about a $200 savings.
$200?
Yeah. So, it's a real savings at that point.
Good.
Okay. All right. If I'm not mistaken, I was accused of having the county give the equivalent of Happy Meal rebate, rebates.
Yes.
So, it sounds like that type of a savings is much more than a Happy Meal.
This is 200 bucks to make a pretty nice Happy Meal.
This is real movement, and I mean, by law, you Commissioners would have had the opportunity to move the constant yield within the law. It wouldn't be, even though it is a tax increase, you wouldn't be moving the rate. So, you're reluctant to do, in my opinion, the right thing.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, moving right along into our action agenda, item number three is the Transportation Enhancement Program Application Submittal. Mr. Barkdick, how are you, sir?
Okay. I'm ready for spring.
All right.
Everybody, I wasn't in Frostburg today up at the depot, I'll tell you that. Anyway, seriously, thank you for the audience this evening, and what we're here for this evening is concerning a grant from the Maryland Department of Transportation, Transportation Enhancement Program. We're moving into Phase Two on the first floor, as you possibly knew, and we've talked about, and it will concentrate on transportation, namely, the National Road. And this would be a $150,000 grant, and we would actually construct the 1811 National Road on the first floor, and we would place vehicles there, one of which would be the first and earliest is the Conestoga Wagon. And we've talked about that before, and it is in the Thresher Carriage Collection. As the road would change and time moves on, we would have a horseless carriage which would follow that, and the road would change in construction, and in the third phase of construction would be an early vehicle, which would be a very early Model T. We'd follow up with documentation, graphics. We also would involve the CNO Canal and the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad. To complete the picture on the first floor, we have our museum in sort of a time chronology. On the first floor, we'd start in the beginning with the early residents of 12,000 years ago, move into the colonial period, and conclude with transportation, namely, with a lot of concentration on the National Road. When I say, when we're asking for your endorsement and support, we're not asking for any financial assistance at all. What we really need is, we need a government body to endorse this project. We, as a nonprofit, cannot put our signature on it, so we are here asking if you would be kind enough to consider putting your signature and your support with this. If you don't have any questions, why, that's pretty much basically what it's about.
Before we entertain the motion, Gary, I just want to thank you and your board. The Allegheny Museum is, is a gem, and there's, there's not too many counties that can showcase that type of commitment, and your board has just done a great job, and it's very, very impressive.
I like it.
And turning the ballroom and having weddings there, and it has just been an asset, so thank you very much.
Well, I think it's a place to go for everybody, no matter whether you're interested in history. We don't have all sort of dry cut history. We have, you know, general human interest subjects and things, and we do have other events, such as Dancing with the Stars. So, I think all four corners of our community can come and go through there and have some form of enjoyment. And I tell you the most encouraging thing for 2013 is the wonderful Maryland Television special that was on, which I think was a real boost and, and enhancement to us, and we've had responses at bed and breakfasts already.
Wow.
And then a couple weeks ago, we had a nice write-up in the Washington Post, so we must be doing something right here, and I know one thing some people are discovering, it's not only us, but the Frostburg Museum, the Oakland Museum, and all over, so I think we're on the move, gentlemen, and I hope we continue to do so.
And this National Road display will be a great use.
It's gonna be exciting. It's gonna be very dimensional. You know, a Conestoga Wagon is quite rare, and that's gonna be a real showcase. If you look on television on the Loray Caverns and their museum, and they have a respectable vehicle museum down there, what they have featured as their featured vehicle is a Conestoga Wagon. If you have a Conestoga Wagon, it's, it's quite a serious piece and an interesting piece. It was the Wheels to the West.
Well, Gary, I was glad you was able to find Bill's first three vehicles.
Yeah, it's, I saw the name Valentine scratched underneath the floorboard.
Maybe on the model way.
Okay. We'll be kind.
All right, gentlemen, gentlemen. Someone's gotta be the straight man here. I'd like to entertain a motion to endorse this application made by the Allegheny Museum Board to support the development of a permanent museum exhibit titled "Transportation History and the National Road." Is there a motion?
So moved.
In second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. We look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Gary.
Appreciate that. Oh, my gosh. Two items to include. Do we have to have a TV timeout? No, just kidding. All right, item number four, Commissioners, is Possible Action on Code Home Rule Bill Mr. Rudd?
Nothing to say. I mean, you all were here the last two weeks. You know what it is. It's time to act. If you want to act on the sprinkler deal to give the 500 hours a year for three years, 1,500 hours for introduction, or installation of a residential automatic sprinkler system in one or two family dwellings.
Commissioners, I move that we accept Code Home Rule Bill 2-13, the Residential Sprinkler Incentive. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Possible Action on Code Home Rule Bill 3-13.
This is the bill which basically authorizes the Commissioners, if you choose to enter into an agreement with an animal welfare organization to operate the animal shelter and/or animal control.
Mr. DeVore, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Well, the Commissioners, you've heard from a large number of supporters of this particular bill. In the past Commissioner meeting, we're ready to move, to move forward, and this allows us to be in those negotiations. This does not set anything in stone or bind us to anything. It merely allows us to sit down and start working on a detailed operating agreement on the transfer of shelter operations.
Did anybody sign up? Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, I have a few questions for Dick, if you don't mind. Dick, we're not, I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse here tonight. This only enables us to move in a, perhaps a different direction. But let me get this straight. We have an organization in the community that has started a capital campaign, hired an architect. The only thing they're asking for, from the county at this point in time, is the land to build this facility on, to run programs that the county is currently now responsible for running, and they haven't asked us for a dime on, on the capital side. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Wonderful.
I like the way you tied that in with the museum, putting the cart before the horse.
Make sure, I had to make sure everyone understood what we're talking about here.
Unnecessary comedy. Mr. Valentine, that's two.
You wanna eject?
No, you're, we'll all eject ourselves and you stay. Anyhow, okay. I think that's a good, good point to be made, that these are funds, and I think you said, how much were we talking of raising for our facility?
They're talking about a facility ultimately with a price tag of over $2 million.
So, for that $2 million is that they are going to raise?
Yeah, and they are out actively pursuing that now, as well as the fact that not only are they pursuing money to support the capital campaign, but they're also pursuing additional monies to support the operation side of it. So, ultimately, you know, this is a case, and I think you heard from Dave Williams during the hearing, where he said, you know, this is a case where a nonprofit can actually take it a step farther than what the responsibility level of government is, so this is a good thing.
So, Richard, just, just one more point of clarification. If we take a look at the historical commitment, the financial commitment the county's been making to both the sheltering and control program, and we let somebody else do it, do you feel, are you confident that this organization that we've been, we've been talking about and working with for the past decade has the ability to take those funds that we've committed and take them to another level?
Absolutely.
Perhaps leverage those funds and get additional grant funding that may be lost to the county at this point in time, because we're just not aware of it.
Well, and, and you raise a good point, David. As being a nonprofit, this opens the doors and allows them to apply for grant opportunities that aren't made available to local government shelters. So, it not only opens that avenue up, but other avenues that can be reached as they negotiate agreements with other nonprofits to share resources and to work in the rescue field.
Well, Dick, if there's a downside to this arrangement moving forward, I hope you bring that to our attention, please.
We'll do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, like to entertain a motion, unless there's any other comments or questions?
No.
Entertain a motion to accept Code Home Rule Bill 3-13.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda this evening, please?
Commissioners, this evening, I have two items on your consent agenda, one is a procurement for an HVA system here at the Allegheny County Office Complex, and a travel request.
Questions? If not, entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Mr. Everly, what say you?
Hope everyone has a safe and happy Easter. And no, no public meeting next week.
No public meeting next week? Okay. Mr. Rudd?
Ditto to his comments about the holiday. That's it.
Commissioners, any thoughts?
Yes, I am going to keep it short, because I'm going to leave here in a minute, because I got another meeting to attend. Happy Easter to all, and as usual, our calendar is posted on the web, so you didn't have to remind me this week. So, if it's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna try to get over to my other meeting, and I got some business to attend to yet tonight.
All right. We'll see on the flip side. Happy Easter.
Yep. So, good night, Chris. See you later.
Commissioner?
So good night, Chris.
Commissioner Valentine?
Well, I also wish everybody a happy Easter. I made what I hope is my last trip to Annapolis this year on Wednesday. We did rather well on Annapolis this year, putting the brakes on a lot of legislation that would have been quite harmful to Allegheny County. Biggest thing, Nancy Kopp, who's spoke to us at Mako, and she's got some concerns about the effects the federal government will now have on the state of Maryland and municipal government. Moody's, who recently raised our, our ratings, is thinking about downgrading the federal government. And the sad part about that is, if the federal government gets downgraded, everybody gets a downgrade, since they are the priority target. So even though our fund rating went up just recently, if the federal government gets downgrading, the state of Maryland will get downgraded, Allegheny County will get downgraded, all the municipalities will get downgraded. So it's a big snowball effect. Hopefully, that doesn't happen.
Certainly. And speaking of that, Commissioner, of course, you saw the Honorable Peter Francho, our comptroller up in Frostburg today. We actually had an opportunity to have him in-house, and I got to interview him on Commissioners Chat. And so look forward to the website here in about another couple days, and you'll be able to see the, the comptrollers, his thoughts on the state, his thoughts on the county, and his, his thoughts about being a politician and the way to get results for the taxpayers. And so it was a good, probably a 20-minute, 25-minute interview, and if anybody out there has any suggestions for Commissioners Chat for us to interview people that are important to Allegheny County and the actual running of it, if it's economic development, whatever it may be the topic, please let me know. We've had a couple different people be part of Commissioners Chat, and since our delegation will be back home here very shortly, once the budget is passed and Sinny Dye comes on, I look forward to extending to all four of our legislators an opportunity to come in and, and talk about basically whatever they'd like to talk about relating to Allegheny County. So look on the website for the next installment of Commissioners Chat.
Mike did not wear his referee shirt in that.
No, that is correct. I did not wear that, so. Anyhow. Peter did see the referee thing, and he said, was I gonna do that between him and the governor? I could be the official referee between those two, but anyhow. Like to remind everyone about the Allegheny County 2014 budget process. It is open to all. And the three commissioners have completed a two-of-three-week hearings of budget requests for the agencies with FYI, FY 2014, July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. All agency requests now have been completed, and the budget workshops will be followed. Tuesday, April 11th, 2013, 3:30 will be our first budget workshop. Thursday, April 18th, 2013, will be our second budget workshop. Thursday, April 25th, will be the presentation and first public hearing of the preliminary budget. Thursday, May the 2nd, will be the second public hearing. Thursday, May the 9th, will be the presentation of the five-year capital improvement program, and will be the third public hearing of the preliminary budget, and adoption is planned tentatively for Thursday, June the 6th. I'm looking in the back to make sure I got the right copy, or did I read something wrong?
Just gonna say, it's Thursday, it's actually Thursday, April 11th.
Thursday, April 11th?
Yeah, not Tuesday.
Okay. It's always good to have mom and dad in the audience to help out the children. All right. Additional information on the Allegheny County Historic Budget Information is presented on the website at www.gov.alkanet.org. From the homepage, select the departments, select Finance, select Budget Archives, 14 Fiscal Years, 2000 to 2013. I almost forgot. Is there anybody that signed up? No? Okay. Like to remind everyone that next Thursday, we will not be having a meeting. However, our next Public Business Meeting will be Thursday, April the 11th, 2013, at 5:00 in room 100. Next Thursday, the Rural Counties Coalition will be hosting a dinner with the legislatures and the delegation chairs to give a recap of, of the session, and so I'll be giving you a report later about that. Anything else? Okay. Like to thank everyone for participating in your government, and I hope you all have a safe and enjoyable Easter. Thank you very much.